Great. Well, we can get our work session started. We have two advisory committee reports tonight. And thank you so much for joining us. Mr. Will Lang and Ms. Beth Downey. We appreciate you joining us to with our first advisory report tonight on FATE. So without further ado, I will turn the floor over to you, Mr. Lang, so you can give us a summary of your report.
Talk to you this evening about FATE. A little bit about myself. My name's William Lang. This is my first year of my term as president of FATE. Been a member of the board for probably four, five years at this point. You know, this year wasn't without its challenges. We've been operating for the better part of the year without an executive director. And I only mention that as an opportunity to illustrate that it's a real testament to the level of commitment for everybody that's involved with FATE, with regard to the teachers and the administrators, the employees of Fairfax County, of course, the members of the board. We do have a teacher here this evening, Marcial Rubio. He's one of those contributors. He's in charge of the construction over at our site. His wife is here as well.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
For me, it's been a real, it's been a really good lesson in everybody's enthusiasm and their ability to rally behind the cause. Because at the end of the day, the school year didn't stop, right? And we still had to figure out how to get everything done. And you know, if, please forgive me, but I feel like I have to mention the, nothing short of a Herculean effort that Beth Downey and Jen Glazer and Joey Frank Phillips, all employees of Fairfax County, have had to do just to kind of help us make sure that we didn't miss a step. But again, you know, I just mention it because even despite all that, we still, I feel like accomplished a lot. And I'll just summarize, you know, in partnering with student auto sales, we still sold cars to the tune of close to 250,000 bucks. We added two new board members. We're always trying to expand our outreach. We're looking to find certain specialties where we can bring in some, a better knowledge base with regard to marketing and some of the things that we aren't really strong with in our board membership right now. Also aligning ourselves with some of the larger corporations. One of our new board members is, works for Cox Business, which is a big corporation, which not only is looking into potentially having a board member, but also other partnerships with regard to FATE and what they can provide for students. We awarded $21,400 in scholarships to young adults that are either moving on to careers or going on to continuing education. I think the applications were as many as we've had in a number of years this year. We continued our support with entrepreneurship programs in the academies. Was it Chantilly and Marshall? For those of you who don't remember, the students get to go up to New York. We support them financially to go up to New York, have a trip, purchase a product, create a marketing plan, come back, figure out how to sell it and have the market days at their schools. Another interesting thing, and this was born out of necessity, and I'm happy to answer questions afterwards. I'll summarize on it though, but we built a tiny home. Again, it was out of necessity. However, you know, HGTV has done a lot in opening people's eyes and minds with regard to different housing products. The tiny home is an interesting concept. As we had it built, it was one of those things where it was kind of an eye-opening thing for us. Just to elaborate a little bit, we didn't have our permits ready to build our last home last year. And we didn't want the summer program to go without education. So very quickly, we came up with the idea of a tiny home. But now we're starting to look at the possibilities of imagine the, not having the logistical constraint of having kids go from schools to one construction site and potentially having a mobile construction site or multiple construction sites on schools. Now, we haven't approached you yet with that because one of the things that we're having to do is, as a board, figure out, is this a sustainable business model? And once we can figure that out, and thanks to the HGTV, it seems that there's a market for it, but we're just trying to figure out if there's a sustainable one ongoing. And then we'll start to figure out all the other problems. And you know, not to diminish it, but we did build and sell two houses. 2016's home, because it started late with regard to the permits, it didn't get put onto the market until the winter. And that carried forward into this year. So it actually had, it kind of suffered and just a little bit about myself, I'm a home builder in my other life. It sat on the market over the winter. So it had longer days on market. And you know, sometimes the perception is that, oh my gosh, this house has sat on the market for a while and people think there's a problem with it. And there wasn't, but it just got put on the market at the wrong time. But fast forward, we also had 2017's home under construction and underway as well. So we literally got a contract on Lot 7 for 85, and which was a little bit reduced from what we had originally planned. And literally within a month, we've got a contract on Lot 8, which was 2017's, for 919,000. Now, not to diminish the products that go in these homes, they're really top-notch. As a home builder, I feel like I'm confident in saying what the students are building and what they're representing in terms of Fairfax County and FATE is really top-of-the-line stuff. And I can only imagine for a student or a young adult in that experience, the education that they're getting, they're not learning to cut corners. They're learning to overbuild. And that's a good quality to start off with. And then you get into the rear wheel and you figure out how to be a little bit more efficient and so forth. But it's more of a, the product that's out there is really unsurpassed, in my opinion. What was interesting though, despite the fact that we're all working together, trying to keep this thing moving without missing a step, one of the things that was interesting that we did with regard to this last contract was typically what FATE does is they decide to build the house. They build the house. They have a scholarship ceremony in it for the students that built it. Then they decide that they're going to sell it through a board meeting. Then they decide how much it's going to cost. Then they decide which listing agent's going to sell it. And then they put it on for sale. Well, I went to the board as soon as we found out that somebody was interested in it. And I said, "Sorry, we got to figure this out. We've got somebody that's interested in a house." So I think we kind of kept everybody on their toes, including the attorneys at Fairfax County, where everybody was kind of forced to adapt. But again, it kind of showed an interesting aspect to what we do, that we are very adaptable and somewhat fluid. And I know that Fairfax County is not as so typically because it's a larger corporation, they have a lot more procedures and such. So we enjoy the ability to have some flexibility to do that. Because if we didn't, we wouldn't have been able to sell a home. We would have had to go through the normal process and maybe we would have put it on at the wrong mark, at the time of the market. Let's see. And then lastly, this is kind of a big one. We're continuing the process of identifying the next site. We have eight or nine years left on our current site. But Mrs. Strauss has been very instrumental and Mrs. Heinz, we've been very, you guys have been very helpful in helping us wade through that process. We've now reached out to Fairfax County Board of Supervisors to try to explore different possibilities. Mrs. Sanders has also been very instrumental. You were at that meeting with us, with the Board of Supervisors. So what we're going to be faced with, because the process for entitlement, the process for permitting and so forth takes years. I think, what was the timeframe for the last project?
We started about the same timeframe last time before they built out, about eight to nine years prior to finishing the site.
We need to be thinking about what, where are we doing this next? And maybe that's a different business model. And that's what we're having to look at now. So again, it's that ability to try to adapt our business model and be a little bit more fluid. Maybe it's one site, maybe it's multiple single sites. That's going to be, logistically, going to be a little bit hard. Maybe it's a different housing product type. Townhouses, affordable housing, we talked about. So we're trying to figure that out. Whatever the site is, is whatever the site is. Maybe tiny homes takes off and that's the next thing. Who knows? But we're not stopping. I know that we are avidly searching for a new executive director, but we are, I'm very confident we're in good hands up until that point, that we're very fortunate to get a new person and real excited about what's going to happen next year. So with that, I'm open to any questions.
Great. I'm going to start with Mrs. Strauss. Well, thank you all. This is always very exciting to get updated. Now, just so that I understand, so you actually, you sold the 2016, 2017 house? And then you have the contract on the next house as well? And so that next house, where you have the contract for 900 and some thousand dollars, that's going to be finished?
That one was this year's house. So it's probably within 30 days of finishing.
Okay. So does this mean that you actually have sold two houses within this school year?
Correct.
Okay, cool.
We will have.
You will have.
The one that's under contract closes on June 23rd.
Okay, all right. So how does that, how does that, because usually it's only one sale per school year. So that, I mean, how is that going to work financially for you? You get more money than what you had anticipated.
Less last year, more this year. So I think it kind of evens out.
Okay, so that does. Okay, well, that's, that's great. And that you are flexible enough to be able to swoop in with the buyer that was ready for this next step. So that's great. The tiny home sales, that's fascinating. Who knows whether or not this is just a TV promotional thing or whether or not that is a business model. The spirit box at Chantilly, and you had a picture of that. And that's, that's part of the, of the project that the kids are doing that is singular to Chantilly, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And how do you see that as developing or being in other schools? I think that's sort of an interesting project.
It really is an interesting project. That actually started, I think, when I first came on on the board. And it really was just kind of a test case of, hey, let's experiment with this thing. It really has grown legs and I believe other schools are looking into potentially doing it as well and using Chantilly as the model. As far as I know, it's a huge success. I mean, as far as FATE's concerned, we're kind of out of the spirit, the current spirit box. We lent them the money to do the endeavor and they've already paid it back. So it was a good exercise with the students to, from the financial aspect of it.
Right. So then are they, are they going, they have enough money to finance, to keep going with this? In other words, what, okay. So you did the seed money and so that project will continue on. So then my next question is, since this is an automated thing in order to sell stuff, is there any, do they want to sell other things in the same way? Because it's spirit wear right now, right?
Right. I think that's up to the students.
It is. It's tied to the entrepreneurship class at Chantilly. And so they market and look things. It is some spirit wear items. They do have some everyday items that students might need also. In conjunction with this, during lunchtime, they also offer and run the, I think it's called Purple Express, which is kind of like a school store on wheels.
Right, that's what I was wondering.
And so they do have that in conjunction. This is for 24/7 in the lobby of the gym.
Right.
And there are other schools that are looking into this. It's a very popular mode of selling items in Loudoun County, which is where some of the teachers got the idea from. And so there are some other schools that are investigating it. But we do tie it to the curriculum of entrepreneurship because of the marketing pieces of it and that, starting that business aspect within that curriculum.
Thank you. That was a great idea. And the last part, as I noted in your report, that you advertise, people donating cars and boats. So are you now redoing boats as well?
We have, I believe in the last five years, had one boat donated. It's generally, they work on motors and they work on, but it's not, it's not a popular item for donation. Usually the resale on the boats is much higher and people sell those rather than donating.
Right, okay, all right, great. Well, anyway, it's wonderful to get to get your reports. I think it's thriving and you all are creative. And this partnership with the business industry is, I just think, so successful. So I congratulate you and I hope that a whole bunch of us can figure out how to, how to move forward with the next chapter of building site, what have you, the project. So we will continue to push that.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, thank you all very much. So yeah, the tiny house. And I'm sorry if I missed this. Did it sell? Is it finished?
It's not done. So we actually, one of the things that, one of the people that got turned on their toes was Marcial with the house that just got sold. We had to focus all of our energy and attention on getting the one that has the contract on it now to the finish line. So that, we were hopeful that we were going to have the tiny home finished and we were going to try to have it here for you guys. But probably next year, we'll be able to walk through it or maybe an event we would love for you guys to come to. We'll invite you and we'll have it. Probably, yeah, our dinner in the fall, we'll have it there.
So it's a, it's a house that fits on the back of a 18-wheeler trailer, right?
It is. I mean, it's a fully functional tiny home. So it's got a kitchen and it's got a bathroom and it's got a loft and it's got the table. I mean, so when it's done, I mean, it's, for all intents and purposes, no different than the ones you would see on HGTV.
So do you, do you have a sense of what the market would bear for something like that?
Well, there is. I mean, so the, the interesting thing is you'd want to make sure that you're not jumping into a fad. And the fad would be, in my opinion, the retail market because that ebbs and flows really quickly, right? But there's a lot of users for these things. There's, one of the challenges is the zoning aspect of it. You know, HGTV brings it up and makes it real exciting and attainable. You pay a certain amount of money and you get it, but then you got to put it somewhere, right? And so it might take a while for the zoning ordinances to catch up to the excitement for these things. But if you think about it, there's institutional uses, there's emergency uses, there's recreational uses for these things. So that's what we're trying to explore is until such time that somebody can have it as a place for Grandma and Grandpa to stay in their driveway, which I would, probably will never happen. But what is, what does it look like between now and then? And we're looking at a lot of different things. We're looking, we've actually reached out to a number of tiny home builders all across the country to kind of talk with them about their business model and what they do. And the good thing is, we're not a threat because of competitor because, you know, we're a school. But you know, one of the ideas we bounced around, again, this is just total idea, is that, you know, maybe we build the houses for them because they got to employ people and they got to have insurance. They got to do all these things. Maybe that saves them money to, if we build the homes for them. So we're bouncing around all kinds of ideas to see what, how can we make this sustainable? Because if we can figure that out, and it'll be for you guys to all figure out once we get to that point, man, the possibilities are endless with regard to how many young adults we could educate and get excited about. Because the funny thing is, they are as excited, and Marcial could probably expand on it, they're as excited or more excited about the tiny home because the students designed the tiny home. The students picked the products that went in the tiny home. So they're from start to finish. And it's, it's a quicker build, it's a mobile. So I mean, there's all kinds of possibilities with it.
That's so exciting. It's like there was a, there was a need, a problem, a challenge, right? And we, that's great. I mean, the creative solution that actually ends up adding value to what we're doing with the kids. I think that's wonderful. So when we talk about different kinds of housing, you mentioned also affordable housing. So I'm just curious, that gets into zoning as well, obviously, right? So for example, the site that we're working on now, would it have been possible to take a part of that site and do an affordable home? As part, I don't know, how many homes are on that site when we're all done?
Was it 18, I think? So it's, you know, maybe at the time, but I, you know, I wasn't part of the rezoning or the subdivision at the time. I would imagine it would have been a rezoning, but again, I don't know what the...
Okay. But so it's something we could, when we, when we zone, when we ask for the zoning for the next site, we could maybe make that part of our ask. So we'd like...
Potentially. I mean, that gets into a whole comprehensive plan issue and, and other things that the county wouldn't typically, what we call spot zone something. So it would have to be part of what they were already anticipating being there.
Okay, yeah, I imagine that would be challenging. And then just one last question. You're looking for an executive director. I assume you've got that notice out somewhere. It may be that one of us knows someone who would be interested. Is there any way we could get the, yeah?
We can send that too. It's currently posted in job opportunities.
Oh, on FCS?
On FCS. It's a combined position right now with our Trade Industrial Program Manager. So we have done a national, a national search. So it has gone out nationally and working with HR as well as our local job opportunities.
Okay, never mind then. I can find it. Thank you.
But thank you for your help.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I love FATE. I tell everybody about FATE all the time.
Oh, thank you.
Because we talk about problem-based learning and FATE is problem-based learning. That's what it's all about. And I particularly enjoyed reading your report, which was so digestible and simple and, and had so many great nuggets in it. So I really appreciate that. Couple things. One, about the tiny homes. And we've talked about this in the past. It's fascinating because I was at a dinner the other night up in Boston and I was sitting next to a woman who, we were both, we're both on an advisory board at a university up there. And she mentioned that her son has just started a resort business that has tiny homes across the continent, basing it similar to what the Europeans have done with their tiny homes. You know, when I was, my children were little and we were living in Europe, we always talked about going to the tiny white houses, which were a resort of probably 70 tiny white houses with an indoor water park and climbing walls and everything else. But you rented your tiny home for the weekend. And so this woman was saying that her son has just started this in the Midwest and is starting these little tiny home resorts. And so that might be something that would be interesting to pursue because they took off in Europe and I actually am optimistic that they'll take off here.
Right, I think that.
Okay. The second thing is, you mentioned until you put it in your driveway for your grannies. The state of Virginia actually did modify legislation a couple of years ago. And I hate the term, but they call them granny pods. And granny pods are zoned in the state of Virginia that you can put a temporary home, like a tiny home, on your land without a whole lot of extra zoning as long as it's a family member living there. And so I can find the legislation for you, if that helps.
That'd be wonderful.
But I think that would be worth looking at because at the time, my husband and I teased our girls about we were going to build a granny pod for ourselves. But, so we may be coming your way.
Is that a tease or a threat?
Both, I think. And then now moving from our tiny homes to our big homes, do you have the permits already for the next one, given that the last one was delayed?
We're, we're...
In process.
In the process. We're, it's, we're kind of like that airplane that's coming in without a fuel and it's smoking in over the trees. We're, we're almost there, but it's, we're kind of close.
Okay, but you're optimistic that we won't have a, the same challenge we faced before?
Yes.
Excellent. And now, I always worry when there's not an ask. So my question is, what is your ask from us? How can we support you better? I know that you get a lot of interest and a lot of questions, but are there things that we need to do? For example, all of us have newsletters and we're out in the community talking about all the great things that this school system is doing. Is there something that we as the board collectively or individually should be doing to promote your programs? Do we need to encourage people to donate more to auto sales? Do you need partnerships? What do you, what do you need from us to make your life easier?
I appreciate you asking that. You know, honestly, this has been the challenge since, since I started on the board. It's changing the perception of the programs that we support. It's changing the perception that there aren't, there is no job security or careers in the programs that we support. I'm in home construction. And the guy that is the foreman for the HVAC company that works for us has a really good career and a very successful one and owns his own house and has a family. And there are so many job opportunities that result from the programs we support. And it's not always the person that's swinging the hammer. You know, there are scientists involved what we do. There are politicians, there are lawyers. There's all, literally, literally, construction touches a huge amount of industries. And that's, that's it. So how do we get more students? How do we get the message out to explain to them? You know, great, and I'm overgeneralizing, but computer programming's great, you know? And my 11-year-old son wants to design video games. But honestly, there are so rewarding careers with regard to the programs that we support that they, I just feel like that they don't know it. And if they get some exposure to it, maybe they get the taste. Maybe they get to plant the seed. Maybe they, maybe it's just that little thing that gives them a little bit of a skill that they can then rely, go back to at some point in their life or career. So getting the word out. But then also too, we're always struggling with trying to figure out new innovative ways to partner with programs or help create programs. I go back to one of the programs that was born from, out of necessity, but we justified it because we were, we were jumping into a territory where we hadn't gone before. But we helped support a class in the middle schools that did, that did engineering. And they designed a site. And the whole idea was, you know, I think we helped with the class or maybe the teacher salary or whatever to get these kids interested. And, and I went and spoke to it and a number of the board members went to spoke, went and talked to these kids who designed a site, civil engineering, with the whole intent of it being like, hey, that's kind of cool. Maybe when I get to high school, I might look into doing something like this. So really, it's just getting the word out, helping us figure out, you know, where are the programs that are underfunded? The fun thing that we get to do is, the program makes money. It's not our job to keep it. It's our job to get it out to the different programs that possibly are underfunded, underfunded or needed. And that's the fun part of what we do. So anything you can help with regard to getting the word out, getting more students interested, honestly, get the students to come to the tiny home that we're trying to get at some of the schools for registration and stuff and get them to look at it. Maybe that's all it's going to take. But how do we get the word out and change the perception?
I think you hooked all of us and I'm sure that we'll all be promoting it. But if you have any, any verbiage you want us to send out in newsletters or if you need us to promote or make sure that you can have, we clear out enough parking spots for the tiny home, we'll be happy to help you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Janina Kofix?
Whoops. Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders stole my opening line. I always say that FATE is the best example of project-based learning that we have. And thank you so much for all that you do. We really appreciate your work during this year. We know it's a challenge without having that staff member there to liaison. And so just thank you so much for, for being there and continuing this great work. I was not able to visit the FATE house this year. This is my first time since I've been on the board that I wasn't able to attend. And I, and I'm sorry I missed that. But, and it's not just so much that I enjoy going there because of the beautiful product that's created, but it's talking to those students who, who I, they always continually show you. They're like, see, I did this. I did, you know, they'll talk to you about the baseboard and the, and the crown molding and the things that they put together. And then they'll even show you, they'll be like, well, there's a little mistake here. And they, it's just so, it's so endearing to watch these kids and the pride that they have. And I just thank you for giving our students that opportunity. Mr. Rubio, thank you too for working with so many of our students. And, and you know, some of the students that have come through some of my schools, I've heard from principals and counselors that it's this program under your leadership that's saved some of the kids. They, they just didn't have that concentration on school in the seat hour learning, things that we unfortunately still have to maintain somewhat. And these, and this program in particular has been so important to some of these students to just get them back into school, back on track and then have, giving them the skills and opportunities they need, you know, to have a career, be career-ready when they walk out the door. So I, I thank you for that so much. I will be so happy to promote. I actually just... you for that so much. I will be so happy to promote. I actually just wrote it to the lady over there at that desk that helps me. I said, Karen had a great idea. I want to put it in my newsletter. So we, if everybody puts it in their newsletter at some point in time, you know, maybe when we have the permits ready and the house is starting to be built, we can, you know, promote it that way. And I guess finally, as everybody's talked about this really fascination with the tiny homes, I've watched that TV show, and maybe task the new executive director, when he, he or she gets on board, that contact HGTV. This is a story for them, you know? Sincerely, you know, when you talk about what it teaches our students, as I, as I just said, you know, that's what those, those TV shows are all about. And that would be a great promotion for us. I know there's a lot of challenges, like you said, with zoning and how we do it. And, but it sounds like you're, you know, having a lot of thoughtful conversation right now about your business plan, where you can go. And seizing on this opportunity, I think, is a, is a very wonderful thing. So, just thank you again. We really appreciate your work with, with us. And keep up the great work. Thank you.
You. Likewise.
Ms. Palchek?
I also want to thank you as the daughter of parents who met in architecture school.
Oh, cool.
In Argentina, I hear my dad worked in small contracting, now retired. I love the smell of a construction site ever since I was little. I knew it was not my cup of tea, can barely nail properly, but I do appreciate what you're doing. I think it's, it's wonderful. I've got all these ideas from what I'm hearing. And also, I've worked with Jeff and Jonathan on the Tyson Chamber, and they're fabulous. So I think you have such a great board. I was thinking about the tiny houses. I was actually at the Okagon Craft Show this weekend, and one of their vendors is a company doing tiny homes in their area. So I was like, oh, there, there must be a market. I don't know how long they've been around. But hopefully we can continue that. I had a question about, when you're talking about zoning permitting, I was actually going to ask about that. And I was wondering, because I know the county has built on their land housing for county employees. So when it comes to tiny homes and county land or school land, is there, does it need to follow the same zoning, do you know? Or is there a separate route?
I believe so.
It does have to follow the same?
I believe it's the same.
Okay. They charge, that's great. So I was like, oh, you know, housing for teachers. But that's good to know, because that would be, you know, especially where we have, I know we have some buildings that aren't, that are former sites that don't currently have schools on them. Might be a neat idea, but I really...
We, but we have had those discussions already with the board supervisors, and Ms. Sanders was part of that meeting.
Okay, wonderful. The other one, I was thinking, as you speak about the connecting to the middle schools, I think that's great. And I don't know if FATE has thought about creating a program for our middle school after-school programs, especially in the feeders to those high schools?
That was actually what this program was. We have, as part of the in-class instruction, they would do the civil engineering. It was a program at Irving where they had the technology and engineering, and the math and the science all working together. But in order to expand on that learning, they wanted to have an after-school program. And so that's what FATE helped fund, is a stipend for the teacher on the after-school program. And then they also helped lunch and learns, where during lunchtime, the kids could come and talk to business professionals like Will. They did a field trip out to the job site. So a lot of things along those lines to increase kids and get kids encouraged to look at engineering.
Okay. I love it, yeah. And if there's any way we can help, you know, expanding that, because we have so many, every middle school has a program. Also, recently, I was, ACCA is one of our local pre-K programs funded by a church. And at their 50th anniversary, they had, Home Depot had funded all of these different projects for kids and their families to do. So I'm just like, if we could catch them after that, and not lose them before they get to high school, you know, developmentally appropriate ways, I think would be great for us to partner with. And then finally, as I'm listening to my colleagues, HGTV, well, we do have, you have the marketing part, and we have the academy. So I think Fairfax County should make our own HGTV and combine the two. What do you say, Mr. Moon? But anyway, I do want to thank you. And any way we can support this work, I know it takes a lot of creativity, and I appreciate your dedication. And I would, I haven't had a chance to visit the site. I was moved by the video last year, so I hope to, to make it out this year and to see the tiny house.
Please do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moon?
Thank you for the presentation. That, I'm not going to call it tiny home as a tiny person, spirit somewhat, somewhat awkward. But I may call it convenient home. How is that? Because I'm a very convenient person, too. With that said, you know, several months ago, I had, I did ask, and she graciously, very generously accepted my request to, you know, guide around a group of visitors, educators from Korea. And they went out to a Springfield site, and they got to see this gorgeous house completed by, you know, our students. And that little gentleman was a deputy superintendent of the largest school district in Korea with 1.9 million students.
Wow.
That school district, that school district has about 60 million residents living. That's the largest school district. And he was amazed what he saw. Because they don't have any problem like that. So I was very proud to be able to show that off to, you know, someone from my native country. With that said, you know, going back to the convenient home, that, that, and I am, you know, still on the county's affordable housing, you know, task force, basically. You know, I don't get to go all over their meetings because schedule conflict. But, you know, multiple times, I raised an issue about maybe, you know, work with, you know, their zoning department, somehow, you know, zoning regulations. Find a way to provide our newest teachers who get into Fairfax County for the first time, you know, give some, you know, affordable housing opportunities. And when I was looking at this convenient home, 4 underscore fee might be a little too small. But if you could make it a little larger than 4 underscore fee for the very first, you know, home for someone to come in at a very low or no rent from the school system, it could be another incentive to attract teachers who are, who may be struggling and making their ends meet at the age of 22, you know, paying, you know, paying back their education loans, and for the first time, you know, paying their, for their cars, and paying for their car insurance, et cetera. So, you know, when you have, in a school size, sometimes we have a little excess land of your labor, whether we can work with the county to have some of these placed there, and have our newest teachers stay there for a certain period of time as an incentive.
Well, thank you. I too want to congratulate you on another very successful year. Just reading through your report, it's, it's such a, such a win-win. You know, you, you do so much for our students, and at the same time, provide funding for the, for the scholarships and for the schools and give back. So, congratulations on that. I had only a couple of questions. My, my colleagues have asked a lot of them. You, you talk about, in, in the homes, the big homes, that, that, that's a marvelous-looking house. But you talk about universal design and how this is a relatively unique in our market. Could you tell us a little bit more about universal design? Is it, I see your report says it allows families of differing ages to enjoy the home. Is this suggesting that it is a more open home, or it's more for, it accommodates older people or disabled people? What, what is that about?
It's a, another term would be aging in place. And so what it allows for is, you know, ultimately, if somebody were to become wheelchair-bound. So wider doors, you're building the house almost to an ADA spec.
Oh, okay.
And so you don't have, most houses have stairs to get into the front door.
Right.
At least you go right in. The bedrooms are on the master bedrooms on the main level. There, on some of our houses, we have a master bedroom upstairs as well. But that just is a double win, because, you know, if you have an in-law or somebody that's living there as well. But essentially, it's, it's, we have integrated into the designs an elevator shaft, if somebody were to need that. We also have wider stairs to where, sometimes elevators can be cost prohibitive. So there's another solution where you can be raised in the stairwell, whether you can, or it's a platform, or you connect a wheelchair to it and it goes up the rail. So essentially, it's designing a home that is not to ADA specs necessarily for the need of it being able to just accommodate an ADA. It's, it's for just that.
It keeps people in their homes longer, which I can certainly appreciate. Just, I can certainly appreciate that. And this market, meaning the Washington metropolitan area has more of a need. Is this because we have more people in a situation where they'd like to age in place, and, and they really can't because of the design of our typical home?
No, it's my understanding that this was a, a result of when this property was rezoned, that it was one of the proffers that, I believe, one of the board of supervisors recommended.
I see.
Partnership with the county.
I see.
However, it differentiates us certainly. As a matter of fact, I feel like we don't do a good enough job marketing the fact that they are universally designed.
That's, that's wonderful. That's great news. And like my colleagues, I'm fascinated with the tiny homes. You know, I can't wait to see the finished product. Where is it physically now? Is it on a, is it rolling around the...
It's currently on our site.
It's on the site, okay, all right.
So you're welcome to come by. We welcome you guys to come out anytime.
Yeah. And I think, you know, you, you sparked our imagination and some of the things we might be able to do in the future with this. So I, I am sure that you and the students have a lot of ideas in mind, too. So with that, I just want to thank you very much. And we very much appreciate it, and we'll look forward to your future endeavors and, and visits to the site as well.
Oh, thank you. We can truly enjoy and are privileged to have you guys' full support and allow us the ability to, or at least have some artistic liberty in what we do, and some of the freedom to operate outside of the, you know, normal business constraints that would normally prevent us from doing what we're able to do within FCS. So, you know, it's our charge as, as board members, in my opinion, to operate this like a business. And that brings with it not only the creative ideas, but also trying to figure out some of the, how to be more efficient. You know, we talked a lot about houses, but with regard to cars, we're selling more cars. We're looking at ways to automate that and have cars for sale all the time. If somebody wants to come in and say, hey, I need a car, we don't always have one available. So, we're looking at ways to streamline that process. Beth and Jen have been integral in trying to figure out how we can do better best practices. So really, we're, it's almost like we're, we're going through a process and evolution right now in getting better. And I think next year's, you know, I'm hopeful or confident it's going to be even better.
Excellent. Thank you so much. With that, that, that finishes our work session. We're going to take a five-minute break before we go to our next work session.
Okay, thank you very much.